Good evening and thank you for joining the meeting of the Hampton Town Council for Monday, August 4th, 2014. As to not to disturb our meeting, please place your cellphones on silent or vibrate. And ladies and gentlemen, would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to declare from the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members of the public are reminded that all comments made are being broadcast over live cable television and over the Internet and may be recorded and rebroadcast over the Internet outside of council control. We will now start with Counsel Saroy and do Counsel introductions.
Greg Saroy, 89 Cromer Road, South, at-large.
Ivan McPike, Marion Drive, District 1.
David Rider, Meadow Road, District 4. Tom Brand, Western Avenue, District 2.
Jean Lawless, Kincaid Road, District 3.
And Bill Shakespeare, Western Avenue, at-large.
And I'm Carol Dupree and I live on Monroe Road. We're also joined today at our table by Susan Lassard, our town manager, Denise Hodston, the town clerk, and our town attorney, Tom Russell. Consent agenda. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on any items on today's consent Seeing none, public comment closed. Does any Counsel wish to set aside any items from the consent agenda? Unless there's an objection, the consent agenda items will be considered adopted. Public comments. This is a time for public to address the council on matters that are not on tonight's agenda. All comments are to be directed through the Chair and debate with individual counselors is not allowed. Per council rules, comments are limited to five minutes per person. When you come to the podium, please state your name, address, and the subject of your comments for the record. Before we do the public comment, I have been actually criticized by counselors and by public for not ruling people out of order. We have a lot of arguing between counselors. We have arguing between staff and other residents. From now on, unless it is a direct, unless your comment is directed through the Chair, you will be ruled out of order. So is there any member of the podium, any member of the, I can't talk today, I'm just still on vacation mode. Are there any members of the public who wish to come and address the council? Public comment closed. That was easy. Policy agenda, news presentations and awards. Does anyone on the council have any news that they would like to share? I would just like to remind everyone that Hampton Children's Day is Saturday, August Public hearings, no public hearings. Unfinished business. Pool roof bid award, recommendation of Infrastructure and Finance Committee. You got a question?
No, please go ahead.
No, Denise had her hand up.
Can we just back up to nominations, appointments, and elections for a second? I just wanted to let everyone know that nomination papers will be available beginning this Wednesday, August 6th, for the upcoming November election. There will be nomination papers for counselors, districts 1, 2, 3, and 4, RSU 22 School Board of Directors. There are three terms expiring, that's a three-year term, and there is also a vacancy on the school board currently, and papers will be available for that, which will complete a term until November of 2015, and for the Hampton Water District Board of Trustees, which is a five-year term. So I just wanted to.
Denise, you said there are three RSU 22 seats available plus?
Plus, yes. Three full three-year term positions and the one vacancy to complete the term.
That will replace, or has the potential to replace, the majority of, or many of, a large percentage of Hampton's representation on that.
I believe they have seven or nine, seven?
Seven. Yeah, well, that's four out of seven.
Yes, because they usually, the three-year terms there are staggered, two, two, and three, and this happens to be the year that there are three terms up, plus the vacancy.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I will, okay, the roof bid award, Counsel Rider.
A while back, the Infrastructure Committee recommended that we replace the shingle roof on the pool. We put out bids for a standing seam metal roof and a screw-down metal roof. We got the bids back, and it was the general consensus from Infrastructure and Finance that we accept the bid from McLaughlin Builders for a standing seam roof for $23,849 to come out of the pool reserve fund.
Thank you, Counsel Rider. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Public comment closed. Do I have a recommend, or do I have a motion from the council?
I'll make a motion that we approve McLaughlin Builders at $23,849 for the new roof at the Laura Hoyt Pool, which will be a standing seam roof.
Second. It has been moved by Counsel Shakespeare, seconded by Counsel Lawless, that we accept the bid from McLaughlin Builders for the, replacing the roof on the pool, the entryway to the pool. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
The sources, the pool reserve bill.
Yes, the recommendation would be use the pool reserves as source for the money.
Yes.
Tom has a question.
Question?
What kind of condition does this leave the pool reserve in? As I remember, the pool reserve was created initially for some specific items, and I don't remember roof being one of them, and not that we, it's not the right place to take the money, but what does it do to the pool reserve relative to other maintenance items for which the money was being reserved?
The initial, the initial items for which reserves were being set aside were, 100, would be done at $10,000 a year for the $120,000 that was the cost of some of the repairs that were done over 10-year period. What has happened for the past two years and will be in this year is that pool fees have contributed $20,000 a year to the reserve instead of 10 in order to be used as an offset from when we went, when we split that to go some from fees and some from not. This reduces the plan by about $10,000 as a result prior to this year, but it's not as significant as it would have been if the town had not been taking more from fees to put to reserve in the interim.
Thank you.
Well, this is relative to other things that are in the short-term horizon that the pool may require. Are there other things that are normally scheduled that are going to be required in the short term, and will we have funds to cover them?
The only other thing that's been mentioned as a need, and the pool trustees are fundraising for this, is the painting of the interior of the pool, and that's a fundraising item that they are doing outside of the current reserve.
Okay, well, that's what I remember, and historically, that's when the reserve was started in earnest, was the last time the pool had to be reconstructed, repainted, and taken down the slides and all that. Was what really got us started, the process of having insufficient funds in reserve to take care of the pool's needs, and that's why I was wanting to know what was planned in the near future.
Two really big expenses, if I may, were upgrading the heating system with new boilers and the new air handling system, and both of those should last for a while. Those were really major expenses, so I don't think there are things of that order of magnitude, you know, coming along.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Municipal garage fuel tank bid award recommendations of Infrastructure and Finance Committee, Counsel Rider.
A while back, Chip Swan, Public Works Director, brought to our attention that the diesel fuel tank at the town garage was getting old, sidewalls were getting thin, and was on the verge of leaking. So we put it out to bid to replace that tank. The bids came back. The recommendation from Infrastructure and Finance was to award that bid to Smart and Sons for $8,749 for the replacement of that fuel tank.
Any members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Public comment closed. Counselors, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we award the municipal garage fuel tank bid to Smart and Sons for $8,749, and the funds to come out of where, Sue?
Garage reserve.
Garage reserve funds.
Second.
Is there any discussion from the council? It has been moved and seconded that we accept the bid from Smart and Sons for $8,749 with the money to come out of the garage reserve funds. All those in favor? Motion carries. Sewer manhole acceptance. O'Donnell Lead Mountain Properties Development, 206 Western Avenue, Infrastructure Committee Recommendation, Counsel Rider.
At our last infrastructure meeting, Chip Swan brought to us O'Donnell Lead Mount Properties had put in a manhole beside Western Avenue, which is used for the four-unit, well, two four-unit apartment buildings. He made a motion or suggested that we accept the manhole from there to our sewer line. The manhole has been inspected to the town's standards and passed, so the infrastructure recommended that the town accepts that manhole and the maintenance from there to the town sewer line.
Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Public comment closed. Do I pay a motion for the council?
I make a motion that we accept the sewer manhole on 206 Western Avenue.
Second.
Is that manhole in the public right-of-way, or is it on private property?
I believe that is in the right-of-way for Western Avenue.
Thank you.
Any other discussion from the council? All those in favor? Motion carries. Next item, Elm Street East Culvert Additional Funding Request from Streets and Roads Reserves Account, Recommendation of Finance Committee. I'll let Sue explain this.
The Elm Street East project that was recently completed required more guard rail for safety purposes according to our Public Works Director than was designed as part of the project. The Finance Committee discussed this extensively, expressed concern over what was listed as a design flaw in our Public Works Director's letter. The ultimate recommendation was that the $1,000 be taken from Streets and Road Reserve, but that at the next Infrastructure Committee meeting or at some upcoming meeting, the Public Works Director explained to the council what occurred with this and whether or not it was indeed a design flaw or something that resulted from construction activity. But that in making this recommendation, the council wanted further information related to how it occurred.
Thank you, Sue. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Public comment closed. Do I have a motion from the council?
I would move that we spend the additional funding for the Culvert, the guard rail on Elm Street East coming out of the reserve fund.
Second.
We have a motion to accept the Elm Street East additional guard rail funds for $1,000 to come out of Streets and Road Reserve Fund. Is there any council discussion? Yes, Counsel Shakespeare.
I discussed this quite a bit during Finance, because our Public Works Director letter said specifically, due to a design flaw in the guard rail areas on Elm Street East. That indicates to me that the engineers did not design it properly. Now, if he wrote that up improperly, that's another thing. I'm not objecting to this if it's for safety purposes, but when you get a design flaw by an engineering firm that we pay big bucks to, to engineer this, and we installed the culvert system as per specs that the engineer drew up, then I do not understand why there's a design flaw that we have to pay for. It was notated by one of the counselors that, oh, we best not complain to an engineering firm about their design, because then they're gonna over-design. Well, gee whillikers, don't we pay him or them to properly design this to begin with? So I just don't understand why we have to eat $1,000, and I know too, some people, oh, it's only $1,000. Well, $1,000 here, $1,000 there, and it was a good-sized project. How many thousands of dollars, Sue, was it, 80-something?
Sixty-seven.
Okay, $67,000 project, which was the lowest bid, and some of the bids were quite a bit higher. But that's my only comment and complaint about this, is because of a design flaw, and if it said for safety purposes, we felt that we would like to extend this guard rail an extra 10 feet or whatever for the residents, and there's only two more houses down that road, but still, it doesn't matter if there's only one house. If it's for safety purposes, and it wasn't engineered properly to begin with, yeah, I guess the town has to eat it rather than chase the engineering firm, which we hired to do a proper job to begin with.
Yes, Counsel Lawless.
I'm just curious to know if we have a standard contract when engineering design work is done for us, and if it covers any problems that arise later in the design, and if we don't, if we should have some clauses in our contract? That's a question for counsel, legal counsel.
I've not reviewed any contracts, so I don't know what we have.
Sue might know. Do you know if we do that?
The contracts that are used are standard contracts that the town has used for many years in its engineering, architectural design, those kinds of plans, back when this building where we're sitting, the there, was designed, and we had all manner of items. I distinctly will remember one in specific, is that there was, the entrance to this building, as amended, was a curb. It did not have, it was not handicapped accessible. It wasn't, and I went at great lengths to try and get that contract changed. It was designed without what it needed. How could it, and the provisions in engineering kinds of, are that not everything may be caught or may be perfect in what you've done, but it was, as I said, I am in, I am not positive that what is wrong here is, the word chip is used to describe what occurred. What I, as I said, I'm happy to do is make sure that if it was a design defect, meaning somebody didn't measure it right, or somebody, something just didn't end up at the end, not coming out right, we'll have a different discussion with the engineers. But his discussion with me was not related to that. It was related to the end product, when viewed on the ground after construction, that for safety reasons, he felt that the guard rail needed to be longer. That was my conversation with him, but he's not here to have that conversation, and so I don't want to say that it is or isn't. But I will make sure that he is here to have that conversation in the near future, so that you can get your answers to your questions.
Counsel Shakespeare.
Because if it's just a situation where a Public Works Director feels that, like Sue said, it's his feeling that it should be extended, that's different, okay? But I would have liked, if it was a design flaw, I would have liked to seen some feedback from the engineering firm, or from Chip, our Public Works Director, to the.
I can have them both here for that meeting.
Well, they don't both need to be here, but I would have liked to have seen something that says, no, we didn't design improperly, or we did, and geez, we're sorry, it's causing you this extra money or aggravation, or, well, no, it's, it wasn't a design flaw, you installed it differently than the spec showed, or because of the slope or so. And it is a bad, unquestionably, like Counsel Rider said, it's a real bad slope there, and I agree, dangerous if somebody was to go over it. So, you know, we want to make sure it's done properly and safely, but it just bothered me when I saw a design flaw, because I know if I designed something improperly in my business to a customer, and I give them a price, I'm eating it. So, that's it.
Any further discussion? Counsel Brand?
Since you're thinking about getting more information, I'd like to have a little bit more information, too, relative to the origin of Elm Street East. Was it a, the road developed through a subdivision? Was it a town-constructed road, and then houses were, lots were played on it and put in place? Or was it an old, private road that was assumed by the town at some point in time in history? And I'd just like to know what the sort, what the birthplace of that road was.
Any further discussion from the council? Okay, we have a motion from Counsel McPike, seconded by Counsel Saroy, to use Streets and Roads Reserves Funds for $1,000 to pay the additional cost for the additional length of guard rail. All those in favor? Oh, yes.
Can I have a motion to table until we have more information?
There's already a motion on the floor.
But she can make a motion to table.
She can make a motion to table.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to table and a motion to second until additional information is received. The problem is, this has to be paid for anyway, so the money has to come from somewhere, whether or not we find additional information. So, okay, we have a motion to table and a second. Is there any? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, the motion to table has failed. We have a motion from Counsel McPike and one from Counsel, seconded by Counsel Saroy, to use $1,000 out of Streets and Reserves Funds to pay for the additional guard rail on Elm Street East. All those in favor? Opposed. We will, if we get any additional information on this, we will let everyone know, in case they wonder. Moving on to new business. Item 5A, zoning ordinance text amendment, Article 4.6, rural cluster housing, open space exception, referral to the Planning Board.
Want to go ahead and speak to it?
Yes.
On the July 16th, during the July 16th Planning Development Committee meeting, voted unanimously to recommend to the council referring the zoning ordinance text amendment to the Planning Board for public hearing and recommendation. The recently approved exception for the subdivision ordinance for all open space in minor subdivisions is not available in the rural district cluster subdivision because there is no separate language in the zoning ordinance for specific requirements in open space. The intent of this language is to exempt minor subdivision rural cluster developments in the same way that nonclustered subdivisions. So I make a motion that we refer this on to the Planning Board for public hearing.
I would second that.
Okay, before I ask for council discussion, is there any member of the public who wishes to comment on this item? Public comment closed. So we have a motion to recommend to the Planning Board the zoning ordinance text amendment, Article 4.6, rural cluster housing, open space exception. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Item 5B, application for catered function received from Spectacular Events Center September 19th, 2014, at Changing Seasons Federal Credit Union. Sue, would you like to give background on this?
Our town clerk has information on this.
Denise?
This is an, excuse me, Spectacular Events Center is going to be catering the business after hours at Changing Seasons Federal Credit Union on September 19th, and they have, they already have a liquor license, and this is an application to serve liquor at this catered event, and it requires approval of the town in which the event is taking place.
Thank you, Denise. Is there any member of the public who wishes to comment on this item? Public comment closed. Do I have a motion from the council?
I make a motion that we allow Spectacular Events Center to cater the function at Changing Seasons Federal Credit Union, and that they be allowed to serve alcohol at that event.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Counsel Lawless, seconded by Counsel Shakespeare, to allow Spectacular Events Center to cater the event on September 19th at Changing Seasons Federal Credit Union and be allowed to serve alcohol. Is there any counsel? Credit Union and be allowed to serve alcohol. Is there any council comments or discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries.
I'm going to start this this way and come back to Denise for signatures, please. Thank you.
Item 5C, sewer commitment, April 2014 to June 2014. Sue?
Yes, this is, this item allows the town to legally collect the April 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2014 sewer commitment in the amount of $150,801.
Any members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Public comment closed. Do I have a motion from the council?
I would move that we allow the sewer collection for April 2014 through June 2014.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion by Counselor McPike, seconded by Counselor Lawless, to allow collection of sewer commitment from April 2014 until June 2014. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Item 5D, Main Municipal Association Annual Election Voting Ballot.
That's me. The town received the ballot from the Main Municipal Association for, with the Vice President and Directors as recommended by the nominating committee for the municipal association, with the Vice President incoming being Stephen Bunker, a selectman from the town of Farmington, and Directors proposed for three-year terms, Cynthia Minert, counselor in the town of Orno, Lori Smith, the Town Manager of Kennebunk Fort, and Patricia Sutherland, the Chair of the Select Board of the Town of Chapman. These were all, the Directors were all recommended by the nominating committee of the association, and no petition inquiries were received for additional nominations.
Thank you, Sue. Is there any member of the public who wishes to comment on this item? Public comment closed.
Yes.
Do I have a motion from the council?
A motion from the council to approve the municipal election voting ballot.
As presented.
As presented.
It's been moved by Counselor Shakespeare and seconded by Counselor Ryder that we, that we accept the Main Municipal Association election ballot, ballot as presented. Is there any council discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Main Municipal, item 5E, Main Municipal Association Legislative Policy Commitment Ballot. Sue, again.
The, two candidates from District 10, as proposed, are Michael Crooker, the manager from the town of Glenburn, and Donald Carroll, an appeals board member for the town of Stetson. And two are needed to be elected, and there are two candidates on the ballot for that purpose.
Is there any member of the public who wishes to comment on this item? Public comment closed. Do I have a motion from the council?
I make a motion that we support the two candidates who have been nominated for the Legislative Policy Committee for the Main Municipal Association and give them our vote.
I'll second that.
It has been moved by Counselor Lawless, seconded by Counselor Shakespeare, that we accept the Main Municipal Association Legislative Policy Committee ballot. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries.
I'm going to send this one, starting that way, as well, and have it signed.
Item 5F, Rural Active Living Assessment, City of Bangor request. Sue?
This is the Municipal Association ballot, I'm sorry, the Municipal Association ballot that was formally also needs signatures. Yes, the, actually, this was part of infrastructure's discussion, but the city, we received a letter from the City of Bangor, which I had asked Infrastructure for a recommendation on. Infrastructure had a number of questions related to this Rural Active Living Assessment, and I believe we have Jamie Comstock here this evening from the City of Bangor to address questions that the counselors may have regarding this program, or could perhaps explain it, and then the counselors could have questions.
Jamie, could you come to the podium, please?
Jamie is actually, I'm Tracy Goldsmith. Jamie's not here today, but I actually have a memo with me that I can pass out, if that's helpful, and then I'll answer any questions.
I apologize. I knew you weren't, Jamie, when I said it.
That's okay.
It was Tracy. You had done the work for them.
Yeah.
Are there any members of the public that would like a copy of the memo?
I have one more up here, too, if there's. Okay.
Are there any members of the public who have questions for, what's her name, Tracy?
Tracy.
Tracy. For Tracy. Would you like to?
I can give a quick introduction to the project.
If you could do that, yes, please.
Okay. So, RALA is the Rural Active Living Assessment. It was developed by a group, the Maine Rural Health Research Center at USM. Basically, what it is, is a three-part assessment that helps provide a structure for rural communities to kind of examine their policies and the physical environment of the communities, and how conducive to physical activity is for their residents. It's, it's a good way to help either start or continue a discussion about physical activity in the community, and it's been, about one-third of the communities around the state have completed it so far. There's a goal to have all communities complete it by next year, and this, these are being done through collaborations with Healthy Maine Partnerships, of which there are about 27 throughout the state that serve every town and tribal nation in the state. It's, that's, that's like the most succinct way of saying it, and then, and I can answer any questions that go a little more, that are a little more detailed.
Could we have, could we do, public first, please? Thank you. Are there any members of the public who have questions or comments? One at a time. Would you like to come to the podium?
Who are you talking to, Terry?
Either one of you. You can go first, since Terry talks all the time.
Where does the funding come from?
The funding is coming from the state.
From cash flow?
I'm not sure. Is there any, and also if there are any questions that I don't know the answer to, we would be happy to send them in writing tomorrow, once I can talk to Jamie and clarify the question. Nothing. It doesn't cost them anything. This is coming through the Healthy Maine Partnerships, and the only thing we're asking from the community is some collaboration, so we can have a more, more thorough and beneficial assessment.
Is that it? Terry?
So, the, these assessments are for the use of the communities themselves?
Mm-hmm.
And I would guess that someone somewhere is going to look at these and do some sort of an overall assessment or evaluation or something like that.
Yep.
But the goal is not to create any type of interconnectivity between communities in some fashion, or bike trails, you know, different things like that, where there needs maybe pressure or vibe to do this or that.
Yeah, not at all. There's no comparison or rating of the communities against each other. It's really for the individual communities to have the summarization, or like the summary of the information, and then it goes to the state to create a database to kind of have a baseline of where Maine rural communities are at. And I also have copies of the assessments that are used that I can pass around, if that would be helpful. There's three. There's a town-wide assessment, a program and policy assessment, and then a segment assessment, which is of the actual, like, stretches of road.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who have comments or questions? Yes?
If you could get that information exactly where you're finding it?
Yeah, definitely.
And how do you assess, having it be difficult to assess the community, depending on, how would you know how many people use the trails, since it's known turnstile?
Right.
How, how would you assess that?
So, when it comes to finding out how many members of the community use the, like a trail, for example, that's when we would depend on an individual from the town to, who has knowledge of that, to kind of give us an estimate. But I can, I can find a more specific answer of that.
Any other public comments or questions? Public comment closed. Okay, counselors, do you have questions? Counselor Lawless?
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand the work that's involved. And when you say it's a tool, I'm picturing like it's a, it's a questionnaire, or a set of questionnaires.
Yep.
Okay. And you might want some maps or something to accompany it, or?
Um, maps would be useful. We can, there are mapping tools online, like Google Maps, that can be used when figuring out what type of...
So, when, when towns have done this, how long has it taken? Is it like a group of people sits down for two hours and it's done?
Yeah, not even two hours.
Not even two hours?
It's, it's like a 20-minute conversation, maybe, to fill out
Really?
the first two assessments, and then the physical assessment. Just depends on how many segments are done, and I've, with the towns that I've done so far, those have been completed in one or two hours, the physical ones.
And so, do you, do you help the, the town do it?
Yeah, yeah, it's a collaboration with the, our Healthy Maine Partnership and the town.
Wow, it sounds like a job for the Services Committee, if I ever heard one. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
As far as, so basically, in summary, you're asking for permission to do the assessment of Hampton. There's no contract or agreement signed?
No.
In any way?
No.
And we are not held in any way to any findings or recommendations?
No.
Any other counselor questions? Comments?
I have one more question. What are the benefits? I mean, why do people do this?
Yeah. So, one of the benefits is that you have some kind of more hard data that you could use to present when you're applying for funding. Like, if you wanted to have funding to clean up a trail or something like that, you could use this data in your grant application. And then another is to, to just have it so you're kind of like able to talk about it to the town, and it, it's just like a little bit more data, basically, to kind of back up any, any like desires or proposals.
Any other counselor questions or comments? Do I have a motion from the council?
I make a motion that we provide the information required in these questionnaires and a Service Committee meeting to be scheduled.
Second.
It has been moved by Counselor Lawless and seconded by Counselor Brand to provide the information to Rural Assessment Living, Rural Active Living Assessment. Any counselor discussion?
Can, can you repeat what that motion means?
The motion was to provide the requested information to Rural Active Living Assessment. Is that correct?
Yeah.
It's incomplete by the Services Committee.
By the, to be completed by the Services Committee. Any counsel discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Committee reports.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I didn't even realize she was still standing up there. Committee reports, Services and Communications Committee, Counselor Lawless.
We haven't met in forever, but now we have a good reason to. So, that's this coming Monday.
And Infrastructure Committee, Counselor Ryder.
Basically, everything that took place on the Infrastructure Committee you've heard about tonight.
Next is Planning and Development, Counselor Saroy.
There is, the only thing we have that we brought to the table again was the zoning ordinance change. We'll be meeting this Wednesday for our next meeting.
And next is Finance and Administration, that's me. We discussed at the meeting tonight the Elm Street East Culvert additional funding, the pole roof bid, the municipal garage fuel tank bid award, and we also have pool fee increases that will be introduced for public hearing at the next meeting. We also had charter review of Article 2, Town Council, Section 211D Procedures Voting Quorum, Article 8, nominations and elections, Article 9, referendum and initiative, and Article 10, general provisions. Town Manager report.
Madam Mayor, I got one more. I'm sorry, I just found my note. The other, other item that we discussed is, we did have a resident from the town of Hampton come and complain or make statements, concerns about fireworks, fireworks going off late at night. So, we are going to have Chief come in and give a presentation to us to see if this is an ongoing problem, a serious problem, if we've had any injuries, fires as a result of fireworks in town, and to get an understanding of what's acceptable and what is not. So, further discussion in that area.
Thank you. Town Manager.
Ben Johnson, the town's code enforcement...
Ben Johnson, the town's Code Enforcement Officer, has resigned and accepted a job as a property, a job offer as a property manager with a private firm. My plan for replacement is to promote from within the fire department to this position and hire a replacement firefighter paramedic from the recent applications that we received when we advertised to replace Lieutenant Coombe's position. This allows the fire inspector and the code officer to both be cross-strained in firefighting and emergency medical response as well as in codes and inspections. The Public Safety Director is the direct supervisor of both positions at the present time anyway, and increasing our public safety capacity and having a known entity in the code enforcement position are both positives. In addition, the Public Safety Director is structuring the schedule so that by January a code official is available Monday through Friday between the code officer and the fire inspector to make sure that we can better serve our customers. There's been some questions about that in the past. Ben's last day with us is August 14th and he has done a great job during his 10 years with the community. I will say that the code enforcement position in this community is as difficult a job as there is, primarily due to the main uniform building and electrical code that at the present time only applies to communities over 4,000 people and from my discussions with Ben, the state has hopes of changing the version of that that's now, that would be implemented in the coming year and that the next version is twice as onerous as the one that we have now in many respects and will make, will certainly be encouraging our legislative delegation to not participate in that in a positive way because it's going to make it that much more difficult for communities such as Hampton who have more than 4,000 people but whose direct neighbors have less than 4,000 people and construction can happen in the community next door in a completely different manner than it has to be regulated in the town of Hampton. So we are, I am sad to lose Ben. He's a reasonable individual and I look forward to working with our new one who has been an employee for a while and is also a reasonable individual and think that our Public Safety's Director's idea in moving forward to this is a good one in that the more cross-training we have throughout departments, the more versatile and valuable those people are to us. The City of Bangor will be holding a public meeting in regard to Hampton's Saturday bus service and that's going to, because they received five written comments and that meeting is going to be on Wednesday, August 13th at 3:00 PM. It will either be here at this facility or it will be at the Bangor City Hall Council Chambers. Laurie Lynn Scott had sent me an email this afternoon asking if it would be possible to schedule this room for that meeting on the 13th and I said yes. I have not heard back from her to, but I will let you all know that that meeting, however, I also verified with her today that the final decision on Saturday bus service rests with the town of Hampton. That's, it's the town's decision once this process has been through. The town will be doing a promotion at the transfer station on the second and fourth Saturday of the month of September to provide information and flyers on zero-sort recycling and clear plastic bags to encourage participation. We'll be sending out a newsletter this month that includes articles that discuss the promotion and provides more zero-sort information as well. This suggestion was made at the Infrastructure Committee meeting as a way to get people energized and excited about reducing their trash and increasing their recycling, so we're going to move forward with that as an idea. And the final thing I want to mention is what a gift the farmer's market is and our front, air on Fridays. It's a very heavily utilized event. I was there Friday and it's almost like old home week. People are not just buying stuff, they're visiting. It's a, it's a great event and it's wonderful that it worked out, that they were able to use up front. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor comments? We'll start with Counselor Shakespeare.
I hate to talk on a negative note, but what I observed and experienced tonight at the end of the Finance Committee greatly offended me where one counselor, which I considered to be a personal attack on three other counselors, one of them being myself, for not making a certain meeting and which resulted in the town meeting being canceled. I expressed to the chairperson, to the mayor at the end of the previous finance meeting that I was not feeling well and that's why I was not at the meeting. What the Bangor Daily News printed was something else, that I was not there because of a certain reason and I never talked to them about it. But for the same reason, I'm not feeling well tonight, because I just had a root canal and, but anyways, I'm greatly offended because Counsel Ru says there will be no personal attacks on other counselors, period. And I do feel that was a personal attack on us three counselors. Thank you.
Well, I'm really happy with zero-sort cycling, but in that newsletter, could you say where you can get those, where you can buy transparent bags? Someone told me they were at Target and I went there and I couldn't find any and they're not at Haniford. They are at Haniford? Haniford has them? Wow, good, good. Yeah, I'm really happy with that program. And I just want to say that I was walking in the woods and I ran into a neighbor and he gave me a big box of chanterelles and black trumpets and Hampton is the most wonderful place for mushrooming, fiddleheads, for neighborliness, for trails in the woods, and I'm just so glad that I live here.
I just, some time ago, the council decided to fulfill its obligation by the charter to start the process of codification and we asked the town manager to, instructed the town manager to begin that process and contract for it. We haven't heard anything since then and I was wondering if at the next council meeting we could have an update.
I can give you one right now. If you, you'll see a report by the end of August, which is a review of all of the town's ordinances and what, that should be back by the end of the month, that review. They've been working on that since you approved it. We forwarded the changed one since that time and I received an email today from the person in charge of the program for them that the council by the end of August should see the notebook that they provide with everything that's in conflict or has an issue that needs the council then need to look at, so.
Thank you.
Counsel Ryder.
No comment. I was at the transfer station this weekend and making my loops around at the very different things and as I was, after I got done, I was setting the end, I noticed a number of vehicles coming in and just throwing into the regular trash container and I went over and asked, told them that I was a town counselor and asked them what we could do as a town to make life simpler so that we could use zero resource, zero sort, as this is a tax savings to all of us. And the three people that I talked to, I think it's just a matter of, they just do things the old way and they aren't aware of it yet and I think that we, this September thing is good, but I think that more promotion of this is going to be necessary to where they all of a sudden can find out, hey, I can sort these things and throw them out. There was one vehicle came in that went only there, a little small Volkswagen bug, and they threw everything into it and left. So I'm glad to see we're promoting this and I think we need, we need to do some more marketing of it because I think it will improve.
No comment.
And I have no comment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? Meeting adjourned.